Good morning. The public hearing of the Joint Committee on Education will come to order. I am Alice Peish, Secretary Representative for the 14th North Fork District and House Chair of the Joint Committee on Education. I am going to introduce the other members of the committee that are here this morning. I anticipate that members will be coming and going because there are other committee obligations throughout the course today. To my far right is Representative Paul Tucker. Next to him is Secretary Representative Mybode. And to my left is Senator Pat Jalen, Vice Chair on the Senate side of the committee. I'd just like to make a few opening remarks with respect to this hearing. We will first be hearing from a panel of state officials and present and former state officials. We will then be following the agenda as published and posted two days ago. That is available outside of the doorway there. If you wish to testify on any bill, please make sure that you sign up. When we get to H 340, which is the bill that I think most people are here to testify on, we will alternate between supporters and opponents of the bill, which to ensure that everyone gets an opportunity to testify. I will tell you that I anticipate that the testimony on the bills that are coming before H 340 is very sparse. Many of the bills will have no one speaking on them. Some of them will have one or two people. We intentionally scheduled this bill at the end of that list so that a person submitted a bill that comes where only one person is testifying, that person does not have to wait for three or four hours while many, many people testify on another bill. That is the general practice of the committee. I would also like to let you know that because the capacity of this room is clearly exceeded, we've made arrangements after the panel testifies to move to guard your auditorium. I would encourage you, or I would indicate to you that at public hearings, it's an opportunity for members of the public to testify and for members of the committee to ask any questions they might have about your testimony. As you can see, we have very many people here. We generally allow three minutes per person, but if it looks as though we're not going to get through everybody, we may reduce the time a lot per person. We also encourage people to not repeat what has already been stated to the extent that you want to just agree that the points that you wish to make have been already testified to. That would be enormously appreciated by the other people who have yet, who have not yet had an opportunity to testify and who may have something different to say. So I strongly encourage you to think about that when you are testifying. So we will now begin one or two other housekeeping comments. Please turn your cell phones off or put them on vibrate so that they don't interfere with the testimony. It is the practice of this committee to alternate the testimony of legislators with that of the general public. To the extent that we have legislators in the room, I'd just point out to you that we have many, many, many people here who wish to testify who don't normally have the opportunity to engage with members of the committee, and I would encourage members of the legislature to be as brief as possible. So at this time, I would like to recognize our first panel. And Secretary Peiser, if you would like to introduce yourself and the other members of the panel, and then begin.
So my name is Jim Peiser, I'm Secretary of Education. You're welcome to introduce yourselves, and it is okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll be in testimony after that.
Good morning. I'm Paul Sagan, I'm the Chair of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in Massachusetts.
Good morning. Mitchell Chester, Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Jeff Howard, former member of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and Old School Reform.
Madam Chair, thank you so much for holding this hearing and for everybody to speak. Vice Chair, Member of the Committee, it's my privilege to be here and listen to Jim Peiser, Secretary of Education. Education reform in Massachusetts is one of the great public policy success stories of our time. The result of the thoughtful bipartisan process, the 1993 Education Reform Act established a solid foundation upon which real change and improvement has occurred over the past two decades, not just in terms of state law and budget policy, but in terms of classroom practice and student outcomes. As impressive as the underlying reform was, even more impressive is how state policymakers stayed the course through multiple election cycles and leadership changes. Recently, as you know, the legislature enacted several important enhancements to the 1993 law while upholding its overall architecture and its most essential components. Combination of well-grafted policy and persistent bipartisan support has produced outstanding results. Massachusetts has long been one of the higher performing states in the country, which is not surprising given our relatively high levels of per capita income. Nevertheless, since the adoption of the Education Reform Act, our national standing in terms of academic achievement has improved significantly. In 1992, Massachusetts was in the top 10 when it came to age scores, but following education reform, our position and understanding was steadily. For the past decade, we have been ranked number one across the board for each tested grade and subject area. Most of these gains occurred following the introduction of MCAS, with a noticeable acceleration around the time we established MCAS as a graduation requirement for the class of 2003. The lesson to draw from this upward trend is that our state assessment system helped to strengthen curriculum alignment around our rigorous standards, and it sharpened the focus of our schools and teacher going students who were struggling to meet those standards. Testing alone of course cannot drive student learning. The more modest gains on make that we've seen in the past few years along with persistent achievement gaps are indicators that we need to reclaim that sense of urgency, which was so much in evidence in 1993. But even as we redouble our efforts to improve the quality of teaching and learning, we must not walk away from the fundamental pillars of standard district reform that have brought us this far. At its core, the Education Reform Act reflected a grand bargain whereby the state established an equitable funding formula to ensure that all districts in the Commonwealth achieved an adequate foundation budget, sufficient to ensure that all children have an opportunity to learn and fulfill their potential. In exchange for these new resources, the state, in fulfillment of its constitutional obligation, put into place a system of student assessments, both to provide educators with benchmark data about individual student performance and to provide the public and public officials with reliable information about school and district performance based on a common yard set. Education reform also included in this bargain the establishment of a statewide graduation requirement tied to state assessments in high school. This bargain was not solely about money in exchange for testing accountability. It also included a broad set of initiatives to improve the preparation and development of teachers, enhance the management authorities of superintendents, increase parental choice, and much more. As you know, we are now engaged in the process of evaluating whether to replace MCAS with PARC. Although this impending decision has provided an opportunity for testing opponents to revive their arguments from 20 years ago, let me state as clearly and directly as I can that this administration is not about to walk away from statewide assessments, regardless of which tests we ultimately choose, neither will we retreat from our school and district accountability system nor a high school graduation standard. In sum, our state assessment system is an essential tool to balance the interests and responsibilities of the state with those of local communities for the effective education of all our children. This bargain has served us well for the past 22 years. We should not undo it now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and thanks for the opportunity to comment on these bills. And just a point of full information later to be honoring in the State House, our Teacher of the Year, our finalist and semi-finalist Teacher of the Year, our history, science, and math Teachers of the Year, so we'll be celebrating the excellence in the teaching that those teachers represent. So I'm here to testify in opposition to House Bill 340, an act relative to a moratorium on high stakes testing and PARC, House Bill 451, an act relative to autism PARC, and Senate Bill 294, an act providing time to develop better measures on assistance for student learning. I'm urging the committee to consider the impacts of the moratorium that any of these three bills, each of these proposals will require, will have, both on policy, building on the Council of the Secretary, as well as fiscal consequences. Assessments provide parents and public with a common basis to evaluate whether students are achieving statewide learning goals. They help educators and school leaders identify patterns of weaknesses and strengths in curriculum instruction. They ensure that a high school diploma represents a baseline achievement standard. Students must meet grade 10 standards in English Language Arts, Math, and one of our Science Technology Engineering tests. The Board of Elementary and Secondary Education has already determined that the MCAS test will continue to be used for this purpose at least through the class of 2019, where schools and districts, the test results are used as one of several factors to identify underperforming schools that would benefit from more intensive state assistance and support, that provide our students, parents, and teachers in districts a meaningful assessment and thus accountability for results as ill-advised from a policy standpoint. As the Secretary pointed out, Massachusetts is a national leader in K-12 education because of decisions made in 1993 and the consistency with which the Commonwealth has stayed with that agenda, to set high standards and to measure against them, to provide resources to strengthen teaching and learning, to help all students meet the standards, and to hold ourselves and the system accountable for results. Providing each and every student with access to an excellent education was the goal then and remains the goal now. Abandoning accountability for performance will return our bats on 20 years of education informed in the Commonwealth and, most importantly, call into question our commitment to thousands of students, particularly those with disadvantaged backgrounds for whom the scoring K-12 education system is literally a lifeline. Further, the Supreme Judicial Court's 1993 McGuffey decision made it clear that the fundamental constitutional duty to educate all children to a high standard rests with Commonwealth legislative and executive officials. The data provided by the annual state assessments is critical to that work. We cannot and should not halt our school improvement efforts or shirk our constitutional duty, and we need to do, we need not do so just because we are developing what we hope will be a better assessment instrument. A final reason for my opposition is that each of the three bills will place the Commonwealth in a position of noncompliance with federal education policy, thus jeopardizing the 2012 flexibility waiver that we received from the U.S. Department of Education and also jeopardizing lots of federal education funds. I'll flesh those two items out. In return for flexibility from certain aspects of the Federal No Child Left Behind Act, which is the key federal elementary secretary education act in terms of the federal government's involvement with K-12 education, in return for flexibility, states were required to identify the lowest performing schools and ensure that there were sufficient interventions in place to turn around student performance in those schools. We implemented the required accountability structure for our schools and districts through the statewide assessments. Without that federal flexibility waiver, Massachusetts districts and schools would be required to return to all the requirements of the federal law on no child left behind, including the consequences associated with failing to meet adequate yearly progress. As of 2012, over 80% of Massachusetts schools were identified as failing to meet those federal measures. With a return to the NCLP requirements, districts with Title I schools that do not meet the AYP criteria, actual year-end progress criteria, would be required to redirect up to 20% of their federal grant toward providing transportation for school choice and/or for out-of-school tutoring, often known as supplemental educational services. Put that in perspective, a real dollar amount to our schools. Our Title I grant distribution in districts this current year was over $200 million in federal funds. We would be putting those funds in jeopardy. In addition, our Title I districts, so this would disproportionately impact our urban districts, our districts that serve larger numbers of low-income students, students from English language learner backgrounds, would be subject to a 20% funding requirement and would lose control of up to $40 million of that $200 million. In addition, the state receives $2 million in administrative funding from the federal's grant. That would also be in jeopardy. There would be additional liabilities for the Commonwealth on the fiscal side, including the loss of eligibility to federal school design events, which would be significant. Right now, we have quite a few schools in the Commonwealth that are receiving, on average, a million and a half over three years to implement their turnaround efforts. All of that would be in jeopardy. Massachusetts has been a national leader in K-12 education for over two decades, in large part because our system of standards, assessment, assistance, and accountability. We need to build on those strengths, not abandon them. The future of our Commonwealth is linked to closing achievement gaps and ensuring that our schools are delivering an education that prepares our youth for success in the 21st century. I look forward to working with the legislature and the administration in our continued pursuit of those goals.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm Secretary of the Committee. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me this time to talk to you. I have appeared before this committee occasionally as a private citizen in the past. This is the first time in official state capacity, and I'm humbled and honored to do so. And I come here now in this position, knowing that I can represent the needs of all of the children across the Commonwealth and the education that we are constitutionally and I think morally obligated to provide for all of them. I would testify against the following three bills under your consideration, H 340, H 451, and S 294. I urge you to carefully consider the policy framework behind the Commonwealth's achievement of our nationally renowned school system and do evaluate these three proposals. Each of these bills, although seemingly different, will have the same results it passed. It would dismantle the world-leading system of public education that we can build across the Commonwealth. That system was carefully constructed by more than a generation of educators, legislators, business leaders, and other stakeholders who share a vision of educational excellence in Massachusetts, a vision that's been nurtured for more than two decades. Merging our children's progress since the Massachusetts Education Reform Act that was passed in 1993 has been revealing. For the first time, we were transparent of school and district successes and shortcomings in securing strong student learning. Critically, we are using that knowledge to hold all of our students and schools accountable to the same level of expectations. As a result, student achievement has continuously improved, graduation rates are at and scored high, our grades have fallen consistently, and we are able to target and support interventions to schools in which students are just not catching up or may actually be falling behind. Massachusetts ranks at the top of the nation for K-12 education, and most of our students are prepared to compete on a global scale. And prime achievement gaps are nearly million. A large part of the success here is the direct result of our ability to set high standards for our students and educators and to provide student assessments for their youth and apply subsequent accountability in the interest of all students, their families, and ultimately the taxpayers who pay for our schools. As Chairman of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, I had the privilege to hear from scores of educators this year at special forums that were held across the state. These educators have firsthand knowledge of assessments we've been employing and new assessments that we're considering as possible substitutes if we conclude they'll do a better job. These in-the-trenches experts from Massachusetts, from communities across the state, agree that assessments, when correctly used and used efficiently, are a decisive tool for determining effective education in the Commonwealth. Our goal is not to expand the amount of time used for testing. We are not trying to take time to be better used for instruction and to preempt it with unnecessary testing. Rather, we as a board and as departments seek only to ensure that educators across the Commonwealth have a reliable and a comparable accurate assessment of information to any to inform the instruction that they're going to provide in their schools. Further, I believe it's important to address a related issue that's been raised in support of some of this legislation we're reviewing. I believe there's a serious misconception among some constituents that we've created a regime where teachers spend too much time preparing students to take our state assessments and then administering these state assessment tests. In response to the anecdotal reports that we've been receiving, preparing for state assessments, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education permitted permission to study all the districts. Almost half the districts in Massachusetts reported to us that they spend less than two days per year, while another 40% are only between three and four days.
Would it ask you to, as long as the person is testifying, if you were testifying, do not want your testimony to be interrupted by Congress and the authorities? Thank you.
Thank you. So let me state that again. Almost half the districts told us that they spend less than two days a year, and another 40% spending between three and five days per year on preparing their students for state assessments. Notably, more than eight in 10 of these educators from the entire state told us they are using the state assessment results to measure whether their students have met specific and critical learning goals set by the district and teachers themselves. Ensuring equal access to a strong education for all of the Commonwealth students has been our unwavering objective since 1993. I see myself as part of that line of people who have worked towards this goal and will continue to do it. The accountability system that accompanied state funding to school districts created a necessary transparency to guarantee our students make continued progress, and I believe that system is working. So I urge you again to carefully consider any steps that you would take if this undermined this. To do so would be to cheat these students and their families out of the accountability they suspect and educational opportunities they bring. I look forward to working with you during this session and then continuing forward in this role I have positively impacted Commonwealth students, particularly the most disadvantaged students who often aren't heard from. Our studies show, and I believe the testimony we hear supports, that our assessment accountability system makes a positive impact now and given more than ever before. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Howard, a former member of the FSA, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I served a role as a policymaking position, but more importantly, I've been on the ground doing actual education reform in schools, school systems, classrooms around the country for over 35 years. I come to strongly register in the opposition, my opposition to any moratorium on the accountability system that's been adopted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the legislature in the state. I've been frustrated, I was frustrated for most of my time in education reform by the lack of any systematic, systemic assignment of responsibility and accountability among educators in failing and underperforming schools, which is where I've spent most of my career and career. I can tell you stories. Working with the faculty of one of the poorest performing schools in New York State before accountability, they had their state testing system, but they didn't have any accountability attached to it. I was brought in to work with the faculty of this school, and I was surprised to be told by the assembled group of teachers that we are excellent educators. And I asked them to define excellence. They said, "Many of us have advanced degrees in instruction." And they said this in a heartfelt way. And we approach it seriously. We really do a good job teaching the material to our students. I pointed out that they were one of the poorest performing schools in New York State. So I understand this. And that was met with general silence. They couldn't explain why the kids weren't learning it, or they weren't prepared to explain that to anybody. This is the disconnect that I've seen in most of my years doing this work, in the mindsets of chronic underperforming schools across the nation. Little or no sense of actual responsibility for educating poor and minority children. The problem was them and their families. We do our jobs, but somehow it just doesn't take on them. It's been very widespread. The standards and assessment were there, and the accountability systems that were made possible via, for both students and teachers, and we should point out, students are being held accountable for their performance in this state with the graduation requirement. Massachusetts, of course, has been at the forefront of all this. This system has dramatically altered the landscape for education reform in a number of ways that I have seen personally. First, by providing for the first time evidence of real variation in teacher performance. There have always been highly professional educators in all parts of the country, including Massachusetts, who hold themselves accountable for actual learning in their students and shape their instruction to actually get that learning. With statewide and nationwide assessment systems, we can see their excellence really for the first time and compare their performance and the performance of their students with the performance of other schools' students. And the differences are manifest, they are crystal clear. This makes it very difficult to claim that the problem is unteachable students when it's clear that there are some people who are in fact teaching them. Second, the accountability system promotes much greater professionalism across the Board of Education by giving educators and students an unambiguous target, proficiency, and a regular stream of data to indicate how they are doing. It's awakened for many people, and I see this everywhere I work, a drive for improvement, just as we have seen in Massachusetts. This has promoted much greater receptivity to what a colleague of mine calls the knowledge base of teaching. More educators are embracing the knowledge base of teaching so that they can get results on the assessments that they are being confronted with on a regular basis. Third, the system has to have teeth to truly drive broad-based teaching. Installing a statewide universal system of accountability, as my board did, what, 34 years ago, sends a clear message. These children can learn, and it is our job to teach them and to demonstrate that learning. Without accountability, we rely on individual commitment and motivation of teachers, and that is there for many teachers, but it does not catch for all of them in a way that actually produces performance. The history of underperformance in some communities, the communities I tend to work in, shows that the voluntary approach leads to too many unacceptable results over a much too long period of time with no change. Fourth, we create the possibility with this assessment system and accountability that entire communities that have access to their students' performance data can see variation, can see it between different classrooms in their communities, can see it between different buildings, and the performance of different communities. That is, they can see variations in outcomes, where there are some that produce fantastic outcomes on a regular basis and others that produce almost none and always claim that it's someone else's fault. These communities can then organize themselves once they understand what the variation suggests about the possibilities. They can organize themselves to play a much more active and aggressive role, assertive and effective role, as what we call demand parents, kind of parents that live in Western and elsewhere, who don't accept anything other than top performance on the classrooms of all of their school buildings. Properly organized and with some effective leadership from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, this data could become a driving factor in closing achievement gaps across the state to a much greater extent than we have so far. So you can see, I really believe in the data that comes from assessment systems, and I would be loathe to see that cut off. So let me simply quickly, Massachusetts has been a leader in the nation, demonstrating what's possible with a rigorous system of standards and assessments. Our students have become the highest performing in the nation, which I use on the road all the time when I'm in other states, comparing our performance to theirs and trying to use that to get them kind of g'dummed to do something about the situation in their state. We're a beacon for the rest of the country. It is unfankable to me that we were deliberately It is unfankable to me that we would deliberately nullify that achievement by abandoning the system of standards, assessments, and accountability that's responsible for it. Our real accountability, all of us, is to the children, and the children are undeniably benefited from the system that we're supporting.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Before we open the questions, I'd just like to acknowledge you can join my other members of the committee, Representative Marcos, to my, excuse me, Marcus Devers to my far right, to my far left, Representative Kim Ferguson, Senator Humison, Senator Rattalian, and Representative Calhoun. Do any members of the committee have any questions for any of the panel? Representative Tucker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the panel for coming. Mr. Secretary, if you could just help me get this disconnect that I see, and I appreciate the work you've done and the improvements that we've seen since that reform. Chairman Zagan mentioned a very small amount of time that teachers appear to be preparing for the test. I have great respect for the work that you've done, also great respect and admiration for our office school teachers. What I'm hearing, and I think Chairman Zagan said it correctly, from teachers who are in the trenches firsthand, is that they're spending inordinate, in fact exponentially much more time than appears to be the information that you're getting. If in fact we're spending so much time teaching for this test, and if as we hear, and I think it's more than anecdotal, that we're losing some creativity, if in fact that was true, and we all want to get to the same finish line, we just may take a different journey, would you consider taking, maybe take a breath and step back from this testing for a bit, maybe to reset things?
So I think there are two parts to this question. One is related to the testing time itself, the other is the preparation, and what the chairman was referring to, the survey regarding essentially direct preparation or test prep, if you will, for those going on in schools to get students ready to take the assessments. I think there's in some ways two separate answers to this. One is around testing time, and the first thing is that we certainly have an obligation to the students, to the teachers, to the schools and parents, to minimize testing time, so that we are testing only to the extent necessary to get the information we need in order to fulfill the purposes, our own responsibilities and the purposes of the educational system. And there are several considerations here. One is just the validity and reliability of the assessment. You have to ask enough questions so that you get a rich enough set of data or sufficient data so that you can actually determine whether a student is performing below grade level, at grade level, above grade level. Second is that the way in which these assessments are being constructed, this is true of both ARC and MCAS, is to balance multiple choice with open response. So you can do a very quick and efficient test using multiple choice, and quite frankly, you get some pretty good data out of that. However, you get a richer set of data, especially for educators, when you're able to ask open response questions and see what the students, how the students respond. And B, that by doing so, we're able to more effectively, I think, influence instructional practice and curriculum such that it's not a very narrow slice of what student learning is supposed to be like in the classroom, but something that more closely mirrors the kind of work that we expect students to do. And then finally, that by testing annually, for example, by testing, by testing annually in each subject, we are able to get a richer or fuller picture of overall school performance and are able to more closely assess the progress of students from year over year to provide the kind of information that educators can actually use to practice and student outcomes. So all of that says that there's a balance that we need to strike between efficiency around the test time and making the test-taking process productive. It would do us no good to have a very quick and dirty test process that minimizes the test time, but doesn't give us the information we need to really help improve the quality of instruction. So that's on the testing time. In terms of the test prep, if you will, preparation for these assessments, first of all, I'm very sensitive to the fact and will acknowledge that this is going on, and regardless of what the survey data shows, it is going on probably more than it should. And in some ways, may be used as a crutch, if you will, or a way to compensate for meat instruction or curriculum gaps. The reality is, however, if you have a high-quality assessment that is based on rigorous standards, that preparing students for that assessment should be preparing them for the material that they actually need to know and be able to do in order to be successful as students and beyond. And so what I would say is that if you're, if we're in a position where teachers are spending a lot of time literally prepping students on test-taking strategies, then that is largely a waste of time, not a complete waste of time, students need to know how to take tests, and that's part of life, I suppose. But to the extent that teachers are preparing students to meet the academic standards that have been established, that's actually time well spent, that's a core part of their instruction. I think in some ways, that's what the survey data reflects, is that they're preparing students to do well on the test, teachers are actually preparing students for the curriculum that is core to their work.
Thank you. Representative Zagan? Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel as well. I guess I want to follow up briefly on that point, Representative Tucker. If, I'd be interested in getting that study and seeing about all of the survey, because I can tell you, not anecdotally, I've got a third grader at home who's at a top-notch school, testing through the roof, and the teacher spent more than a week preparing that, my child, for this test. If I'm in that position, in my accountability, my performance is going to be based on how my students perform. Actually, I'm going to devote more time to preparing that child, so I'd love to see that test. And I guess Commissioner Chester, just on your testimony, look to help me out with the confusion I get. We heard from the secretary and everyone else that Massachusetts is a national leader in K through twelve, that they're top-notch across the board, and in your testimony relating to federal money that's at stake, you said that if we abandon, if we impose the moratorium, we go back to the no-child-let behind standards, eighty percent of our schools would fail adequately programmed measurement. And I've got a problem with that, I just don't understand, if this is apples or oranges, that's one thing, but to me, that raises a concern, they were hiding behind the test, they were not providing our children with supplemental education services that they may need. Could you help me out with that, that describe it to you?
Absolutely, through the chair. Chair, first of all, we'll be glad to give you a survey, and in fact, we're digging deeper with this survey, because what we're experiencing is that districts take a range approaches to assessment. In some cases, we see a lot of assessment going on, in some cases, we don't. In some cases, we see schools where the instructional program continues while the state test is being given, people don't abandon the instructional program. In other cases, and I have a very personal anecdote with my own child, who's in a school where for two days last week, everybody in the school had a three-hour delayed opening so that honors biology students could be alone in the building for the MCAS assessment. That's a, that's a practice and approach that that school taught, that many other schools do not take, they find a way to keep instructional program going for the rest of the school. So we're digging into the data further with some actual case studies of districts, the little variation in which those districts approach testing. You asked a very sweet question on, you know, how could it be that the top-level state and the nation, by virtue of any measure, on this federal, what's called adequate due to progress criteria, that eighty percent of schools are missing that target? And that's a function of the federal government back in two thousand and one, the no-child-let combined legislation, giving states a dozen years, I think I've got the dozen right, to get from where they were in terms of proficiency rates to one hundred percent proficiency. So the standard in that federal legislation, there still is the legislation that's on the books, is a hundred percent proficiency, while very few schools are getting that target. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to us, not very helpful to anybody. In fact, it destroys the credibility of that system, so we applied for the waiver that allowed us to implement the system that we developed here in Massachusetts. That's the waiver that we're operating under. But stepping back from the system of accountability would put us in jeopardy both for funding and for having to back-up the system.
Representative Lea? Thank you very much. In fact, I missed this, my colleagues were in a school, and it's like, did anyone quantify the number of days that it's estimated that is utilized for testing? And if not, could someone answer that question for me?
So I provided some data from a survey of all the districts that the department did of how much time was spent preparing for these assessment tests, not on how much testing a school does, or also quizzes, exams, AP honors, SEC, other things. Those numbers were provided, and I'm happy to believe them, and the secretary said, the department will provide that whole survey, but it was a survey of all of the districts. Almost half reported that they spent less than two days per year preparing for the state assessments, and another forty percent spending between three and five days preparing for the assessment. So that would be primarily MCAS, and some of the other states, maybe it's part preparation, school.
So I just finished sharing a couple of years on the end of the school committee, and I would say that, you know, we tested ARC, we had MCAS, and so I guess I was operating under the assumption that most communities had a similar amount of test time to my community. And the other day, I went over and spent some time talking with some teachers from Lawrence, because I now live in Lawrence. And I was really shocked, I heard, in addition to MCAS testing, they're testing on an early basis with a math test and with another testing, right? Forgive me, I forget the name of it, so I'm not going to be misquoting. But they are testing on a much higher basis than, you're talking about something on the order of eighteen to twenty days on a weekly. And I just find that unbelievable. And I live in an adjacent town, in Surcal School Committee, I had no idea the degree to which we were testing in Lawrence and perhaps other communities. And I just, you know, I think the reason why I just heard this talk right now, full of people asking for a moratorium, getting back to what Representative Tucker was saying, is that at what point do we have so much data that we've lost by dividing why we're there? So I think the reason why you're seeing a very black or white ball or nothing, you know, a lot of people here wanted to wave at it, you see the value in it, is because maybe we've gotten well younger than we need to be with this. And so I really feel like the answer may lie somewhere in the middle, but I really want to talk about this, because I met with a very, very dedicated teachers who are very concerned about their students and who are just operating with a constant time pressure and threat in terms of how, because these teachers get washed out if those scores aren't, you know, where they need to be. I've heard about an entire first grade getting washed out in an entire school twice now with a lot of story there. So I'm very concerned, and I want to understand this better, and I want you to understand that although you're looking at an average, there are definitely communities that are real above that average.
Through the chair, Senator, my anecdotal observations are consistent with yours, and that I see a wide range of approaches to assessment. The figures that the state board chairman said are about preparation for state assessments, that there are a lot of other assessments that are given. When I'm in schools, I visit schools a lot, I'll ask folks, what do you do with the assessment results that you use, that you administer? And sometimes I'm alarmed, because I don't get any answer that suggests to me that they're of particular value or that people are putting them to use in ways that help them readjust instruction, reteach, regroup students, think about who needs a different approach. In other cases, I get a very positive response, I feel very, very confident that the assessments are being used purposely and to inform decisions that are being made at the school level by teachers and administrators. So I do see a range, there's no question about it. It's rare for me to visit a school that has been on an upward trajectory, more students reading better, doing math better, getting a full range of subjects, where when I ask the faculty, what's the special sauce? What is it that went into this? It's incredibly rare for me not to hear one element, not the only element, but one element being, we've got some system of figuring out where kids are, not waiting to the end of the year, but some way of assessing border the way through the year, six weeks through the year, twelve weeks through the year, so that we don't let kids fall behind in no reason to be retooled and so forth. So I do see a range of practice.
Let me just, because if you do miss this part of my testimony, if I may, the board's goal is not to do more testing, it's to minimize, and we're very concerned about this, that's why we looked at the study and asked for it to be done, because we were hearing these things as well, and we recognize that there are a variety of amounts of time used and other tests that are not federal or state requirements that are not. So we will continue to look at it and try to find a way to make the burden as light as possible, to make sure, as the secretary said, we get data that's usable, that's informative, and at some point, if the anecdotes are difficult, I too visited Lawrence very recently, went to multiple schools, and many of the things I heard from the teachers was about the data they were getting in the rapid assessment, frequent assessment they were doing, which were not state requirements, they were not MCAS, because they were talking about the need to modify students on a weekly basis, monthly and quarterly, to make the gains that they generally reported. So I think there's a line that gets crossed sometimes, we need to be careful to make sure there's no undue pressure to do it, but many of these days that testing is a decision by the schools and by the teachers, and I've heard both, which is it's too much, and we should worry about what we do. And sometimes it's extremely helpful, and for the first time, they get real-time answers about what your students need, and then they can respond before they lose half of their work.
Senator Zagan? I just want to affirm that my colleagues' experiences in their districts that the numbers that we're getting are not the same as the data here for our districts, that I can take a high-performing high school where there's a parent class preparing kids to take tests, you know, the right, so, and that students say that does not prepare them to other kinds of programs. So I just want to, but I want to go back to, Senator Tucker had referred to the gray margin, it's really important, and Commissioner Chester spoke about holding ourselves as well as others accountable, and this is not actually a question, that it's a question for our colleagues, I think, is to what extent we account ourselves accountable to this capital margin that was funded. And the reason I bring that up is that low-performance schools are exclusively in local communities, which are not under the state. But it's just we read on a current day that they have looked at the wonderful information they have done on the website, showing that twenty-two districts are spending below foundation, and we know from all our information that foundations are too low. Those districts are, this report, low-income, and low-performance. Well, I feel like I want to keep both parts of the bargain and not continue to ratchet up the accountability on one side, on the kids and the teachers and the schools, without keeping our side of the bargain. That's actually not a question, it's a challenge to all of us, and so I'm not going to ask for a refund, because I know there are plenty of people.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Very good, Madam Chair. Mr. Secretary, if we put aside from the relative merits of the MCAS, is there a concern that the delay in getting the results comes back, and we kind of lose the scheme of it? And secondarily to that, are there any other states that have developed their own proprietary test that has input from educators, from, and we have some very smart people in this state, is there any thought to develop our own test that's a good instrument, that we can get some quick results and do some targeted teaching?
So, sorry, I'll refer to Commissioner as well about what may be going on in other states, but I'm probably less familiar with that. I do think that the ability to turn around the data quickly so that it can be of use to teachers and schools, so that they can make adjustments in a timely way is absolutely critical. It needs to be balanced with, you know, trying to time the assessment itself so that it's actually testing what students have been taught during the year rather than sort of what they don't know at the beginning of the year. And this is, you know, in some ways a trade-off that we've been struggling with. ARC has a particular approach to it, where they do an assessment in two phases, although that's a little bit up for grabs right now. One happens a little bit earlier in the spring, or like one or the other, closer One happens a little bit earlier in the spring, or like winner, the other closer to the end of the school year. But this current year, I know there's quite a bit of concern that people, there's press even in the news last night, that the results, especially on the PAR assessment, are not coming back to the schools until well into fall, which is a function of a standard setting process that's underway this summer, which is a result of a limited first year implementation of this assessment. All that being said, that's a little bit of an excuse, in that I do think we need to be as creative as we can, we need to devote more time to interviewing, I think, the data back to teachers as quickly as possible, so that at a minimum, prior to the beginning of the next school year, there's a clear understanding of which students are struggling, which students are behind, which students are ahead, and so that we're able to craft programs for each of those students as they enter the next school year that's designed to meet their particular needs.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, the two goals that you identified, Massachusetts Educator Participation, it's highly rated, of course, I think that Massachusetts educators participate in developing the MCAS, they are participating in the PAR assessment, we heard from one of our teachers who was part of the development committee for the PAR assessment. The idea of returning results more quickly, one of the goals of, there are a number of potential benefits, bringing in assessment administration online. One is potential for much more innovative kinds of devices, and others, much more engaging experience for kids in an online environment. A third is the ability to turn things around much more quickly, in part because you're not, you don't, at the front end and the back end of each testing cycle, a process of packaging, mailing, shipping, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to pick up on the point that the Secretary made, the notion of trade-offs is a huge, huge tension in developing assessments. We want assessments that require kids to do ambitious, rich, engaging kinds of tasks. And you can't do that through multiple choice tests, and you build tasks that let kids spend time reading papers, comparing, walkers' opinions on things, doing research. That expands a lot of time. So there's a trade-off between how much time and how ambitious an assessment can be in terms of the kind of data that you get back. Secretary pointed out a second tension, which is how late in the year you test, right? Because ideally, you'd like to get the results back well before the end of the year, so you can plan for next year. But the closer, the closer to the end of the year you want the results back, the earlier you have the tests, and that's a trade-off concern, so I had to give the folks a full ear of this question.
Seeing no further questions, I thank you very much for your testimony, and I agree you will undoubtedly follow number three, particularly some of the specifics of the testimony, folks, and so thank you very much. I'd now like to just make a couple of procedural announcements with respect to the hearing. I've reviewed, would staff all of the sign-up sheets for the various bills. I see that, as I anticipated, the overwhelming majority of you are here to testify on bills dealing with assessment. This hearing also had scheduled a few other bills, some dealing with privacy, some dealing with technology. What I am going to do, because there are very, very few people who have testified on anything else, is to go through the bills that do not relate to assessment. I anticipate that will take a matter of minutes. And we will move to Gardner for the testimony on the assessments. Now, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the other bills. If you, it takes a while to get to Gardner, for those of you who are not familiar with the building, you need to go either outside and, well, probably you can't enter through that door, you need to go up to the second floor, cross to the front of the building, and then take an elevator that goes down to the auditorium. With respect to legislators who I see have been waiting here patiently, I am going to strongly encourage either extraordinarily brief testimony or submission of written testimony, particularly if you are not the primary sponsor of the bill. So what I'm going to do now is ask the three legislators who have been standing here for some time, if they could come up as a panel and testify. And I'm just going to announce the bills that I'm then going to hear testimony on here before we move to Gardner. H three eight six, Bobby Wolf is the only person signed up to testify on that. And S two nine eight, where we have, again, Bobby Wolf or Michael John Ray, and I cannot read the first name, but the person is affiliated with the CC Forum, who's lost her. So, and if you could, as you're leaving, if you would be mindful of the fact that people are testifying, please, for right-hand speaking, I would very, we would very much appreciate it. Representative Cantwell, Jen Teal, and Campbell, if you'd like to come up.
Representative Cantwell, I think you'll go first.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Senator, I'm here to testify on two bills. First, to address social media password privacy, as anyone who's ever been in our community. This has been discussed before, the hearing started, we'd be very, very brief, because we know emotional security is going to be heard online for PAR testing legislation. I'm here to testify in favor of House three eight six. This is relative to social media password privacy of school students. I know that we have language that I want to give to the committee, because parts of the bill who are excerpted by the state are being found. This would outlaw a practice that's not the other states, that when somebody's complying with schools, all of the delight that they're given, required, they have to give their password to some of their social media, and for jobs as well. During written testimony, we go through a number of examples, but there are people who are excluding from jobs, including students in college, just because they're refusing to give that information. And then others who have thinks that they're not aware, this is right for the doing of extra job applications. So bodying right now, and then follow up with people being excluded from acquisition board from that college. So that's the first bill that I can sponsor for, and we note that the lien's warranted with Representative Gordon on birthday, and John with him, if that's good great legislation. With regard to PAR testing, the only thing I want to say, and certainly from our experts who are here, is such a disconnect, such a disconnect, from what I'm hearing, what I need with mine features. By the way, my mom taught for twenty-six years, she certainly wanted to see the students excel, and she thought it's the greatest gift in life, and a gift that wouldn't have to read. So we're not against saying that we want to have high-scale, not against that we shouldn't have more fun in, but what I do speak for a lot of the heads is hearing teacher after teacher saying that they don't want to give any creative education. And what I want to leave you with is that when I studied in France, one of the greatest things that I heard from French students was saying, you Americans, you can do so much better than us outside of the box, because you don't have to learn to a test. The whole criticism is directed towards one test, debacle area, or the like, is that we excel with critical thinking, because we didn't have that kind of critical testing. And that's what I speak to you for why I support House three forty for a moratorium on the high-stakes testing in PAR. I appreciate your consideration of the testimony.
Representative Cantwell.
John, hi, I'm members of this important committee, thank you very much, and we'd be very grateful if I could testify on. And I'm here to comment on the opportunity, I think that we have, resulting from legislation that we have before the committee's hearing. I believe that we have a great opportunity as elected officials, and I want to emphasize elected officials to develop congressional policies on this issue. And I cannot overstate how important this is to the families that I represent, and I represent the communities of New York and April. I found a position paper released by the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents to be helpful. It presents a way for us to gain access and control of the testing process, control which now includes us. As we approach period transition, and testing, the recommendations to acquire a pilot period, I think is absolutely critical. The most essential question is, what is the rush? For the quicker we try to implement PAR, the sooner we will be presented with another, theoretically better, and improved test, such as the cycle we now face. A sufficient pilot period will allow us to time testing, so that it improves learning and teaching by taking place after learning occurs, recognize and incorporate the timing and requirements of new local teacher evaluation systems, and maximize instruction time. I strongly believe that these provisions do not currently exist, and that coordinated testing policies are not sufficient. Again, it's the enormous opportunity, and I want to emphasize the word opportunity, to develop policies that will respect our students and our teachers, and will allow us to incorporate future testing laws, which will surely come our way. I hope that we'll seize this opportunity to be exceptionally deliberate in our approach and give a pilot program the time that we need to succeed. Thank you very much, Representative Cantwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of this representative's. I've been explaining that the history of practice of high-stakes testing in our public schools and the Commonwealth and other states, and submit to you that we're doing a great disservice to our children by causing them to spend three and four weeks earning school year things, high-stakes test revenue, engaging in learning mathematics, biology, history, and the other subjects we provide for them. Last week, it was my pleasure to meet with a group of residents, including parents, teachers, school committee members, a college freshman, in several cities and towns, including Norwood, Wayland, Sudbury, Waltham, to discuss PAR, MCAS, and high-stakes testing of our elementary, middle, and high school students. It was the most recent of a number of meetings I've had, my own constituents and other residents in the Commonwealth on the issue of high-stakes testing. Third-grade teachers spoke of students so stressed and anxious because of the testing that they would become ill. And I was shocked to, when she told me that they actually had this waistband that the testing company provided for the retention of solid test papers to prove that the students who failed the good exams really had been ill, off the chart. Fans of teachers observed that some students taking PAR did so with desktop or laptop computers, while children in other communities had only smaller screen tablets. Test questions were not given for the proper age level, the testing company advertised for SA graders offering eleven dollars an hour. These high-stakes tests measure how students perform. They don't tell us how well the students will perform in college or other post-secondary education. They not only rock our children with weeks of learning, but adversely affect their mental and physical health. The experience we've had with PAR this past year in the cities and towns that elected to use it demonstrated that it's not ready for more general use, and it's inferior to the MCAS. For the health and education of our children, we need to pause, reflect, study, and determine the best way to proceed. House three forty will take us on that path and enrich our children's lives with decreasing their levels of stress and the causes. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for any member of the panel? Seeing none, we thank you for your testimony. As I indicated earlier, it's the practice of this committee to alternate between legislators and members of the public, so we'll now move to H three eight six, Bobby Wolf. And in the interest of time, if you'd like on the rest of those, if you signed up, please.
Good morning, Bobby Wolf, I'm here to testify in behalf of the American Civil Rights Union, and I, in the interest of time, I'm actually not going to say much in support of these bills, but I did want to be record recorder in support of House bill three eight six, and send a bill to the ninety-eighteen. Two measures that are, could provide good clear guidance to schools about protecting students' rights and rights, and I would have felt that I wasn't doing the right thing if I needed to come to say personally, is that we're supportive of the measures, I'd like to engage this conversation, but I'm not specifically to thank Senator Cantwell for giving the objections. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wolf? Seeing none, we thank you for your testimony. I know that we have a couple of other representatives here, Representative Smizek, Representative Oral, and Representative O'Connell, if you would like to testify as a panel, that would be very helpful.
I'm sorry. You have a, you have a, you have a, uh, quote.
Pardon?
I think there's a representative.
She said you, you're not going to testify.
I'll write you down. Right, no, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee. I rise in support of age four fifty-one and age four fifty, a return of primary sponsor. Four fifty-one is an act relative to costing PAR in contrast to what the commissioner and the prior panel indicated, it's simply asking for the cost related to PAR. I've been asking for over a year and a half for the cost related to each community per PAR, and I have not received that information. I continue to ask, and that's what four fifty-one is, it's asking for that information before we continue to go down this road. I've got general information from the Department of Education about seven eight million across the Commonwealth, but it's not clear to me how that's going to be go-ed out. So it may be the next best, greatest thing, but if you don't know how much it costs and how much it's going to cost a community of Andover, or the community of Acton, or the community of Bedford, then we really need to have a better understanding of what this new initiative is going to be, because our municipalities are already struggling to make ends meet, and I've had conversations with the Chairwoman about this, I did start my own spreadsheet. And so some of my communities are better prepared than others, but the community of Middle Road is just deciding about a million dollars that they would need to be up to speed if the decision were made this fall, and I just don't see where that money is going to come from. So four fifty-one is simply asking for information regarding the cost. Four fifty is asking for reimbursement for those costs, because until we have an identified funding stream, I'm afraid that it's going to be pushed back onto my communities, onto our superintendents to find the money, and that to me is not funding aid. Thank you, Representative Cantwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members, for the opportunity to testify very briefly. While I support several of the bills that I've agreed today, I'm just going to talk very briefly on H three forty, an act relative to a moratorium on high-stakes testing in PAR. I have heard from many parents and teachers, very different concerns about these tests. And I do believe that testing provides valuable information on which to measure student and teacher performance, but the implementation of PAR testing has really put undue pressure and strain on our school systems, on our teachers, and on our students. Massachusetts adopted Common Core standards in PAR in order to secure two hundred and fifty million dollars in race-to-the-top funds, yet schools have then begun testing without the proper preparation, technology, and resources which they all need. So we see some students taking testing on computers and others with pencil and paper. Testing should enhance the learning process, but the implementation of PAR seems to have the opposite effect. And when tests are very high-stake, if the topic is not included in the testing, it is not a classroom priority, and that's not because the teachers don't want it to be, it's because they just don't have the time for all the other learning that should be going on and is suffering. So they've reported numerous concerns that I will not go over, because I know you're going to care about them all day long, but one of the top concerns I hear from parents is that the federal government will be collecting massive amounts of personally identifiable data about their children, and they have no say in how that data is used, who it goes to, and how publicly it's made. So we all know where there's smoke, there's fire, and when we have people from all different parties, all different stakeholders, that have grave concerns about Common Core and PAR testing, I think we can no longer ignore these serious flaws, not only concerning that teachers were not involved with the writing of the federal standards, or the decision for NASA to implement PAR and Common Core, but it's just plain wrong that they were not involved. So I think forming the task force that includes all stakeholders to study and recommend appropriate testing and evaluation of students and teachers will result in a higher quality of education and learning for all of our children, and I think it is opportunity to testify and bring a battle to that.
Representative Oral, I'm going to just keep your eyes short. As the members want to those two bills, I just wanted to speak to those, but I do support industry forty, three eleven, and three seven, the obvious of any testimony that I have. Thank you very much. Any questions for either of the legislators, seeing none, thank you for your testimony. I indicated that we would now move to S two nine eight, where we have two people signed up. I just noticed that Mayor Langs has joined us, and I will recognize him immediately after that announcement. So, Michael John Ray? I just noticed that Mayor Lang has joined us, and I will recognize him immediately after that announcement. So Michael John. Is Michael John here?
Yes. Essentially, I want to testify to 450 and 451.
You have to sign up on 298.
Well, that's not the first one I want to testify to.
Yeah. We are here. This is on S 298. So you are signed up. Would you like to testify on S 298?
Well, not really first. So can you put me on the next one for 450?
Well, that would be a little regard, if you want to wait. So we're going to close the hearing on S 298, if you want. Michael. And again, I'm sorry I cannot be the right one, but there's someone here from Worcester representing the CC forum. Is that a person here? Seeing, not seeing anyone else sign up, we will close the hearing on S 298. We'll close the hearing on S 386. I would also like to close the hearing on the following bills that we have been known to sign up on. S 325, S 386, S 360, S 298, as I said, H 495, H 474. I think that concludes the, oh, S 334. I would now recognize Mayor Lang, and after Mayor Lang testifies, we will move to guard your auditorium.
Good morning. I really appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts with you quickly. I want to, again, if you take that lightly, looking at the bills, I believe that bills that have merit are H 322, H 497, H 407, H 340, Senate 311, Senate 257, and Senate 294. That was all I had to say. I would think that you would wonder why it came up so early, that was a very important thing. This issue is the most important issue, I believe, that the legislature funded makeup this year, which is this, in essence, what I call the unintended consequences of education reform. I served as head of the school committee and chair of New Bedford from 2006 to 2000, the end of 11, beginning in 2012. Before then, I was heavily involved in the school departments, as well as my kids, and also have taught at the University of Umanus Gardens for 14 years. So let me just share with you a couple of observations. First, this is a public policy decision that has to be made. This is not an issue that needs to be deferred back to DTSB. And when you hear stories about how it's actually being implemented in the field, and that means the MCAS graduation requirement standardized test, I think after 13 years, given the requirements of graduating, you need to really start to look through the weeds and see how this has affected the state. I believe it fuels the dropout rate, not only for the kids who believe they won't pass the MCAS test, and they may actually begin getting an impression in fourth grade, but I know that it fuels the dropout rate for kids who feel that school now is just teaching to the test. All of us had testing, all of us had assessments. That's a straw dog issue. We also have the Iowa test, wherever it might have been. The problem here now, by tying it into the graduation requirement and also indexing it into whether a teacher is doing a good job or a bad job, is whether a kid can pass a bubble test, you end up in a situation where we have gutted, teaching the entire child, teaching kids good citizenship, teaching kids history, teaching kids health, teaching kids phys ed, going ahead and art, music, all of these will gut it. They're gutted one by one in New Bedford because we're striving to meet guidelines and goals which, quite frankly, standardized tests. I've never met a standardized kid. And what we're doing is missing the whole point of why we bring a kid into school and have a public education. The other great thing about this is that two or three bubbles that you don't, you know, fill out correctly may mean the difference between you becoming what is known as a non-graduating completer, which for the first six years, they didn't know what to call these young people. Now they call them non-graduating completers. A non-graduating completer in society is the same as a dropout. So if you just look at last year's COBART, and it's very difficult for DTSB to act with COBARTs, so non-graduating completers and on dropouts. But I want to talk to you for one minute about something that I heard the commissioners said, and which is something, by the way, that I would take very seriously when he says, "Well, we can forfeit millions of dollars, maybe hundreds of million dollars in federal aid." Our unfunded liability as a result of having non-graduating completers in dropouts as a result of the MCAS system, totals last year, if you look at the non-graduating completers, $264 million worth of support that we will have to contribute to these young people and their families for their lifetimes. $360,000 for their lifetime, times 763. I don't know that I passed the mass MCAS, but I believe it's about $264 million. The cost of the unfunded liability, which all of us in this room understand unfunded liabilities, since the MCAS, is somewhere around $10 billion. So if we're going to forfeit a few dollars in federal funds, by the way, incredulously, we're the number one state in the country. We're in the top 10 in the world. Two-thirds of our schools are underperforming. That makes no sense to me. And now we're going to forfeit federal money for being a leader in education because we're either not going to dance the part or have a system where very few states actually require the standardized test to be graduating requirement. Now let me just tell you how this works, and then I thank you very much. I'll write, I'll give you written testimony to look at with all the stats and figures. But here's how this works. I go to New Bedford High, which, by the way, my two boys did, did a great job, graduated college. Both are professionals, fantastic, they didn't have the MCAS. We trusted the teachers back then to determine whether or not they earned their high school diploma. But what it comes down to is this, I go to New Bedford High now, and Jane Doe and Philly Doe go to New Bedford High. They're not related, but I'm at a loss for good names right now. I take the MCAS. I pass the MCAS. Jane Doe takes the MCAS and does not pass. She may be higher than me in rank in my class. She's passed all her courses as I have. She absolutely, maybe perhaps she is in English as a second language, or perhaps she's involved in a special A category. She did everything I did, but I filled out a couple more bubbles. I had a degree she doesn't. There's no remediation in the state system now. The junior colleges are, I'm sorry, the community colleges don't do remediation. If she wants to try and get MCAS remediation, she's going to have to pay for it. We're going to pay for Jane Doe for the rest of our lives. Good for us. We take her, protect her out of the system. The answer is that is not good for us. That is a disaster. We're going to lose our democracy. And the reason we're going to lose it is because right now, if you go to a private school, you don't take the MCAS. What Judy Doe did in New Bedford High gets you the diploma at Bishop Stang. What Judy Doe did in New Bedford High gets you the diploma at Taylor. They don't know how to spell MCAS. Now, the key is, what happens with those diplomas? Well, those diplomas are given the same weight at Bishop Stang, New Bedford High, and MCAS diploma, or Taylor, given the same weight across the board. The colleges don't get the MCAS scores. The colleges don't, if you have a perfect MCAS score, you get a scholarship to a state school. But other than that, the fact is, the MCAS scores, which, by the way, they now admit don't predict success in college, and two-thirds of our kids are getting remediation if they pass the MCAS in colleges, those diplomas are of equal weight. You talk about the McGuffey case, how are we providing the best opportunity for our kids when the private school kids don't have their teachers vetted, when the public school kids do, and the pro public school kids don't, and they all get the same diploma? The fact is, the kids who aren't passing the bubble test are being left behind, and we're going to have to support them. It does not make any sense whatsoever. Now, who are those kids? And you'll hear this all day today. The majority of them are part of that cheap new gap. So they're below the poverty line. We are setting up a caste system. This will flip us. We cannot tell people, "We will not give you your diploma," even though you would have earned it if you had the ability to go to Stang or Taylor. You don't get a diploma, but we will send you a check each month because you're not going to get it to society. And if you do, we're going to subsidize you. There aren't enough people working day in and day out to subsidize the people we're keeping out. This is a failed prescription. The status quo on this is absolutely dead. If you go in a classroom, I've watched in fourth grade, the teacher's up on a wall saying, "If the answer says nay, if the question says nay, the answer says nay. If you have any doubt about it, key in on that one word. If you don't understand it, go on to the next one, try and eliminate one or two, and a yes." Those are the citizens we want? If we've seen a prescription of what happens when we have disaffected students out in the streets, all we have to do is look at the last year and see what happens if we don't have people in our society. I love this issue because I believe in assessment, believe in accountability, and I don't believe, though, in setting up a prescription for failure. And I think the legislature's the place to do this now. The numbers are overwhelming. If we get the numbers from DTSB, you will find between dropout and non-graduating completers, the unfunded liability that we're not carrying on the books is $10 billion. Because we haven't told kids, "Why don't we value you as an individual? Let's take your creativity." Not everyone's going to be a brain surgeon, but the brain surgeon's got a heat he has to have, or she has to have. A car fixed, whatever.
We'll be on the three minutes and we'll get a lot of people.
Thank you, Chairperson. I appreciate it very, very much. I'm a little bit invested in this issue. I see an awful lot of kids, much smarter than any of us in this room, who have been locked out of society because of this test. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mayor Lang?
Thank you.
We will now move to guard your turn. The remainder of the hearing, I would ask that you all, if you have any questions, there are calls, we would now miss your opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks so much, I appreciate that.
I'll take the bags if you want.
Mike? Now, listen, listen. We're going up this way.
Okay, I'll follow you. Go follow me. Let me get this out. I see someone else carrying it.
Yeah, we're going this way. Look, we're going to run, okay? We're going right. We're going.
Follow you.
We're going to two, but up and down. I don't think we'll fit.
Should we go this one? Or next one?
Wait till they go up and then we'll hit the button again because it'll just stop them.
This one?
No, no, below.
This one?
Yeah. Just these elevators work. If you don't let them get out and keep holding them up, they're going to have them.
Oh, okay. So now we go there.
Yeah, there's so much I could just do.
Janet, I mean, I just couldn't make it full myself.
No, no. I trust your judgment, that's it.
Yeah, I just, I just can't. I mean, I, you know.
They don't hear. It's closed for the meeting, but it's not closed for submission.
Right, right. And I can give it to this.
Yeah.
This is a handmaid. I think he was going to sign up the one, and when you get up there, speak about it. But if you only have three minutes.
No, they're still here.
But you only have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, but the thing is, you have to have something in writing. You know, I love what this mayor just did. He just really, but you know, this was, the Board of Education, what did they do? They let them talk for 45 minutes and they beat on this mayor?
I know, I know. I can, I can do it. It's just that I finished off writing it like, like two hours ago, so. That one's going down.
Well, you know, let's go down.
Okay.
Let's go down and come up.
Okay. It's up.
It's going up.
It's going down. Because we're wrong.
Push two.
Two?
See if it will go up. Maybe it will. Are you going down?
Yes.
We had up, push, but it's okay. We'll go down and then come back up.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's better standing in here, at least we got the spot, than out there waiting.
It's going up. Going up? Come on in. Thanks. What floor? Four? Okay. House.
Is it raining out?
No.
It looks like it wants to, but I hope it doesn't.
It's a little humid, I hope it doesn't.
Me too.
Hopefully it fits.
So this, we're getting out on this floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, thank you. This way inside. What is going? Oh, I know what it is. Okay, we're going to go straight to the end of the hall. Mike? Michael, let's just walk straight. There's so much motion all over. Oh, this, Financial Services is having something, one. Oh my God, wasn't that the hottest, see, what they try to do is they sweat you out. They try to kill people in these meetings. It's very hostile.
And here?
Left. We're going to be, all the way to the end of the hall. I mean, all the way to the end of the building here, too. And then the elevator is on the left, right before those doors. We're going to A, which is the basement.
So we're going one down?
It's the room, the name on the elevator will be A. Right here, right here. Elevator. Boy, this building is hot. When do they turn the racing?
No, we don't.
We're going, oh, up. Oh, that was Fishman.
Dan Fishman?
Yeah.
Dan? She just seen Dan.
He was in the elevator.
Dan Fishman? She just seen Dan. No, you're kidding.
Well, you were there, you couldn't stand.
I didn't see him.
Look, I don't need any small answer. It's Fishman.
Didn't see him. So he must be tested by, must have heard it was the organ.
Now, when we go in here, I'm going to go to the furthest wall, because there's a wall over there that's designated for press, and all the seats in front of it are designated for press. So you could come over there and see what you think.
I'll come with you, yes.
And you can stand anywhere you want if you have enough battery.
Right. Going down.
The decision-making of who stays and who goes.
Hi, Derek.
Doors closing.
Principles.
Please stand clear.
Hold this square? Thanks.
Hope that somebody's skinny. Yep.
It's got a lot of hair, though.
That doesn't take up the floor space then.
Don't worry, I made up for his extra hair.
I think this was a good move. I was getting on.
What was wrong with the meeting room next door?
Doors opening.
There was another hearing.
To enter.
No, there isn't, Financial Services is the one.
Please stand clear.
Public hearing, little reminder. Just a few housekeeping things before we begin. I'm concerned that people who signed up for technology bills, they have inadvertently left before their name could call into the other community room. So I joined here first for Representative Corrie, and then I recall the technology bills. There's no one here. We can move to the rest of the agenda. Representative Corrie? Representative Corrie?
Michael, you can put it in, you can put it down. Where are you more?
I don't want to discuss it.
Can I just drop the walkway just right?
Now, the student, the common screen, but...
Like in the screen, look. I think yeah. No, I think you can go over there. It's not straight. You probably have to be there. You can get up here.
One of the things that bothers me greatly is we have no realistic estimate of the cost of the average of school students and their ability to take these online assessments. And as you all know, there is a statement that your power of internet connections can, to have some students taking the test along with some taking the...
It's so hostile.
Not going to create accurate results across the board. I think the access to internet is really crucial. And I think consequently, we need to take a breather, and we need to do some more studies, some investigation, we need to get our ducks in a row before we move to anything like this. My local community, for one, is financially burdened with all the demands placed on it that we all very have on us.